Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission's meeting on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014. And our agenda tonight starts out with the Planning Commission roll call.
Acting Chair Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Sosin.
Here.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
And our next item is approval of the minutes, and these are from our meeting on October 21st. And just to remind the commission that we did receive a revised version of the minutes, so hopefully you all received that, so you would have gotten two sets. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
So we would be approving the revised.
Correct.
I have one comment. I just wondered if perhaps it wouldn't be more appropriate to have the presentation referenced and attached as a separate document. It seems to me that putting the entire presentation into the body, and this isn't denigrating the work that was done on the presentation, but putting it into the body of the meeting minutes seems a little odd to me. I was kind of going through the minutes, and I saw the presentation, and then there was some testimony by Commissioner Roberts, and to put all that together, you know, on about a nine-and-a-half page document, there was about two or three pages of actual commissioner testimony remaining, so I kind of wondered about that. There seems to be, and I noticed that we're not recording everything, so there appears to be some selective editing going on, but, so I just would like to hear what some of the other commissioners' thoughts are on that.
Anybody else have a comment on that?
And we've had a lot of pretty lengthy presentations that have gone from 25, 35, 45 minutes, and I've noticed that that's a little bit indicative of, we seem to be chewing up a lot of our time on these presentations, and I'm not, I don't want to dampen the enthusiasm for these presentations, but I think a lot of it could be probably summarized and maybe condensed to sort of the Reader's Digest version.
Any other comments? Yes.
I think that having our meetings televised is a good thing, even though it's difficult to be in front of a camera, and anyone entrusted has that venue of following along the word-for-word discussion or presentation of the material that's being given to us, but the written minutes stand as a record that city council also reads prior to their deliberations, and even though they are very lengthy, for me, they provide a refresher of the last minutes, the last meeting, and help me carry the conversation forward if some of the same topics come back up, you know, for our consideration at future meetings. So as a matter of record, I would prefer to keep them as spoken, I think. So I offer the opposite view.
Okay.
Anyone else care to state your opinion about this topic? Hearing no additional comments, do we have a motion about approving the minutes?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Same.
Commissioner Jordison.
Oh.
Commissioner Sand.
Yes.
Commissioner Sosin.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes.
Acting Chair Stewart.
Yes. And, excuse me, our next item on the agenda is a report from any of the Planning Commission members. We'll start with you. I guess we'll go around this way, so.
Nothing.
Nothing to report tonight, thanks.
No report.
No report.
No report.
I have nothing either.
I don't have anything either, so are there some comments from staff?
Yes, Alan Giffen, Planning Department. Just wanted to mention that tomorrow night, City Council will be holding public hearing on two items that the commission worked on, the first one being the change to the B3 Zone wall sign code amendment, and then the second being the amendment to the Student Housing Pilot Project Ordinance, so both of those will be heard tomorrow night. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And then, do we have any comments from citizens in the audience? And then, thank you, no comments from citizens? And then, are there any items that are not on the agenda that, oh, never mind, okay. So our first item that's on the agenda tonight is we're holding a workshop on revisions to the Port of Everett's Waterfront Place project. And we'll be starting with the presentation from staff.
Yeah, Dave Conig, Planning Staff. Soon as they turn on the, here we go. I'm going to give you a quick run-through that was in your staff report information, but for the record, we've provided the Planning Commission with a background packet several weeks ago, which is the Waterfront Place packet of information. We also provided you with a Planning Commission packet, which had a staff report and some exhibits, along with the SEPA documents, which included the SEPA comments we received and information there. And we also gave you the current development agreement and the current design guidelines, so you had those for reference, and I'll explain that as I go through the presentation. So you have all the information, you know, from the past, on what was the current agreement with the port, to the proposed changes, to the environmental documents that have been done in the special studies. So, as you know, the port has requested a change to the 2005 development agreement. It's an area that includes the new marina, the 12th Street Marina that was put in by the port, and it was originally part of the development agreement that that would be put in. Includes the dry boat storage and the waterfront center that has been built, and then the area out here, which has been cleared, which is the port upland area between the North Marina and the Central Marina. These tags here are dated from what the port now calls these marinas, and so this area here, that's along West Marine View Drive, what used to be 13th Street, all the way out to the end, so this is the area in which the port is asking for changes. The process we're going through is that we've done an environmental review, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that, that we're having the Planning Commission workshop. We will have a public hearing before you on December 2nd, and then as soon as you make a recommendation, if you're comfortable making a recommendation at that meeting, we will have a city council briefing and a city council public hearing and decision. The zoning on this is a planned development overlay with waterfront commercial as underlying zone, and as we've mentioned in the past, originally was approved in 2003 and then amended in 2005. The standard for review, so as you are reviewing the changes, is are the amendments in the best long-term interest of the community, and I also expanded that in the staff report, gave you all the criteria, but basically, the other criteria, is it compatible with the surrounding land uses? It was landscaping, signage, buildings, that type of thing, so, but this is the main item here. So the port, as they, we go through this process, needs to show that this is in the best long-term interest of the community, and that you, as a planning commission, will make a determination as a recommendation to city council after considering the information you've received and any testimony. Going through the amendments, the first one is the Shoreline Master Program Amendment, which is requesting allowing housing in a portion of the shoreline jurisdiction within 100 feet in a portion of the area, which is basically on the south side of the property or north of what the port's now calling the Central Marina. View corridors, 13th and 14th Streets were originally city streets. Those were vacated at the request of the port west of West Marine View Drive, and the conditions in development agreement and the street vacation ordinance required view corridors along vacated 13th and 14th Street with standards, so there were standards related to what could go into that view corridor. The building heights were also approved in 2005. There's no increase in building heights, and these are based on the site plan and view corridors in the street grid, so the current building heights. So the result, if you approve it in the street vacation area, heights will increase in the view corridor and adjusted to fit into the new street system. Also, the Warehouser Building is requested to be moved, and that would be accommodated in the 35-foot height area, and I gave you a new page from the development agreement with some language for that in the staff report. So this is what was approved in 2005. The yellow area is the 35 feet. In the new plan, it'll be about right here in this area that the Warehouser Building would be put in. It's a little bit over 40 feet, to give you kind of idea, it'll be the existing Warehouser Building, which is down here, would be moved up to the park up here. And then you have the other heights that go up to, the highest height is 65 feet, when there is a higher height right here, which was a tower that was supposed to be there. The environmental review that has been done includes a new view study comparing the current agreement and the proposed agreement, and that's been part of the background report that you have. So the comparison in the two, this is the street system grid pattern that's out there. The city's actually approved this binding site plan, and so this is actually what's out there currently. So you have, this, here's the 13th Street View Corridor as an example, and then there was also the 14th Street here. And so this is what the current site plan reflects in heights, and this is the proposal. So you can see where 13th Street now, instead of a view corridor, goes away. The roadway comes down and around, similar to what it did before, and then there's these areas where cross connections for, here for cars and pedestrians, and here's one for pedestrians only. And in this area, you can see the change from what was here. And actually, in a little bit of the area right here, the new plan actually is 35 feet here, where some of that was 45 feet in the past. This is the 75-foot tower that was just there, and then these areas here were the 65 feet. This one right here is 55, and these kind of orange-colored were 45 feet. The proposed uses, that's proposed, is that they've basically moved around the site some as from compared in the past. There was more housing in the past, in the sense in the central area, and the port has a desire to have more job-related uses, but there's not a change in uses other than in the shoreline area allowing more housing in that shoreline jurisdiction area. The traditional fishing fleet also has been integrated in the project. The current development agreement and proposal really didn't deal with the fishing fleet, didn't give them a location. This does, and it becomes an integrated point of interest within the development, and so, and as I mentioned, the uses are currently continued from the current development agreement. The digital electronic message sign, no digital electronic message sign in the current agreement. The port proposed a demonstration after this workshop and before the scheduled public hearing December 2nd, they, I'll let them address that, they have a proposed date for that demonstration, and standards would be created after that demonstration, so they would put, they can explain what their proposal is in the sense of what their demonstration would be. In the document that is drafted is that there's a proposal now to allow one digital or electronic message sign at the entrance of 13th Street within development agreement, so that's what's in the document currently and what the request was, but the port wants to do this demonstration to show what they are looking at doing. The design guideline and the standards, there were very detailed design guideline standards adopted when the heights were increased in 2005. Basically, this document, which we provided you, was added in 2005. It was not there in 2003. 2003 had less than that. It was the other document that you have, and at the time Maritime Trust and the port came forward and said, "We suggest these standards with the height increase." What the port is now proposing is some modification to those 2003 standards and a new set of guidelines, which is in your big booklet, to replace this document that was adopted in 2005. There's a new phasing plan proposed. This is in draft form, and that is in, that was in the staff report given to you as part of the, for the meeting tonight. Residential units, there's no change in the number of residential units, so there is still this range that Maritime Trust had, which is 430 minimum and up to 660 units. Parking, residential parking required to be within closed structure. I understand that it's a requirement of the port that they want that removed and allow for surface parking and enclosed structures, and that the parking study was updated as part of the SEPA review, which you received a copy of, and the city engineer has reviewed that, a traffic engineer, and is comfortable with the methodology and what was put in there by the port. Parking management, they've also provided the parking management plan. Staff is satisfied with their approach used and establishing that, and there's also be a phased approach, so as the development agreement, current development agreement shows, and there hasn't been any proposed changes to that, that as the project develops over time, there would be an adjustment of parking management and potentially standards if there was a need to do that over time. So any parking standards change beyond what the agreement has would have to go back through a public review, but a parking management plan in the sense of how parking is being managed down there would be something the port would address in different phases as the project was implemented over different phases. The open space and public access, the site plan has been changed with a different road configuration that I've outlined for you, and instead of, at the end of 13th Street, there was going to be an amphitheater, and then on either side of the amphitheater, there was going to be development, either residential, it wasn't residential, but it was restaurants, hotels, that type of thing. The port's proposed that at the northeast corner, there'd be a larger park, open space, which they've shown pictures of to you, and that's where the relocated Warehouser Building would be located in the long term. Also, there'd be a trail around the edge of the whole thing, the esplanade, with cross connections through the site. The proposed amendments by the port's calculation provides a greater amount of open space than in the 2005 amendment. There's a public dock space that's been moved from the end of the development, so Maritime Trust originally showed at the end of 13th Street, at the very end out in the river, that there'd be a public dock out there. The port's not showing that as a part of this at this point, and it's proposing, within the inner harbor, next to the Fisherman's Wharf area, that there'd be a public dock there, and that would be at water level, and you could walk from the upper level, where there'd be restaurants and other activities, down to the lower area on the dock, and it'd be in a moor. It brings the visiting boats into the marina further in than at the very end, so, and it also allows for people who are in their first phase of development, get to the water and be part of the, on the water right there, which now is not available. Those are all locked-off areas, and you're not allowed down in there. That's for people who own boats down there and are tenants. The environmental review also has information about noise related to the project, and you have that. I promised to get back to you on the waterfront pedestrian access overpass. That project is be from somewhere along Grand Avenue Park. Our Public Works Utilities Group needs to get some water, you know, stormwater across the railroad tracks or under the railroad tracks to replace some current substandard piping for drainage. And what the proposal is, similar to what was done in the riverfront area, is to build a structure that would hold the stormwater across the railroad tracks, and then, there would then be a connection down in the port area, south of this area, but that, where this would come down, so people who live up on the bluff would have access down below. City Council has approved a design team for this project, so that's currently, our Utilities Group is working with them on that, and funding for the project is currently in place between the utility portion of it and then to put the pedestrian part of it, so the structure would be there for the piping, but then to, for walkways and elevators and that type of thing. The city received a couple million dollars through the Puget Sound Regional Council transportation money. There's money there available for amenities like trails and that type of thing, so the city was successful in its last year to acquire some of that. And it's now estimated that this would be built, and it's an estimated time, in 2017. So I promised to get you that information, and that's the latest. Now, it's the belief that we have the funding for it, but we don't have the design and the, you know, it hasn't been bid yet, but this is what, in talking to the Public Works Director, this is what I was told. So timeframe for these amendments, we had initial submittal in July of this year from the port, and staff reviewed and requested changes to the information. When we received the updated information, the environmental review was started. The environmental review for us is where we internally circulate the information with and affected agencies for a time period of 15 days minimum, and then after we get all those comments, which weren't very many internal comments, we then issued a SEPA for public review, which was done for 21 days, and it included a workshop we had down at the port, which was very well-attended by numerous citizens, and that was, that review went public in September 26th with comments by October 17th, and so we provided you the comments that we received during that time in our SEPA document. So that brings you up to date on what, you know, the process we've gone through. The environmental review, as I mentioned, did have two comments, and you have responses from the port to those comments in your packet, and we have this workshop tonight, and currently we are scheduled December 2nd for a public hearing, and if the Planning Commission's comfortable, that would be a decision meeting, and then right now, we would then schedule this in January for a city council. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions. One of the purposes for tonight is for you to ask us for information, if you need additional information, or is there stuff that you, if there's anything you need to help you make a decision, recommendation on this, that you explain that to us or ask us tonight so we can be prepared for that public hearing, and port also in sense of addressing that. So the port didn't have a formal presentation tonight, but I think it'd be appropriate for them to discuss the demonstration that they plan on doing, so.
Okay, thank you. Commission, do you have any questions on the staff presentation so far?
How was the design team selected?
Pardon me?
How was the design team selected?
Oh, for the bridge that you talked about?
You mentioned the selection of a design team.
That's for the bridge that was over there. The city went through a formal process on that, where it was, you know, they advertise, and then people put proposals in, and I don't know the whole team, I know somebody from L&amp;M Architects told me they were selected to be a part of it and were excited about it, so there was a multi-team, you know, architect and structural engineers and such, so, yeah, so. We weren't involved with that process, but that's normally how it done, you know, you select, under State of Washington, you select a consultant team based on their experience and relationship to what you're trying to achieve, and then you negotiate a contract with them, so.
Other questions? Yes.
Dave, I was wondering on the street vacation, so I assume that the vacation hasn't actually occurred yet, although an ordinance has been adopted that...
No, it's happened.
The street vacation's happened.
Yeah, and the port owns the land.
But that was conditioned upon a view corridor.
Correct.
Being established, and now the port is proposing not to have that view corridor, so does the, since that was a condition of the vacation, isn't the vacation voided out?
Well, it hasn't been voided yet, but part of the action the council would have to do is amend that ordinance to, and change that ordinance to do away with that condition.
To remove the condition. So, so this, if that condition hasn't been met, then I would assume that the vacation actually hasn't occurred, and it's still city property.
Well, the land has transferred, the city was paid for it, so the condition is there, meaning that they can't build anything in it, they're now asking for a change to that because the current, I showed you the site plan, that site plan is, and we've approved a binding site plan that includes that view corridor. So they're now coming forward and asking for a change to that.
Okay. So that decision on amending the vacation would be concurrent with this application?
Correct.
Any other questions? Yes.
Sure, just to follow up on the binding site plan, is that administrative review then for the minor amendment?
Excuse me, Alan Giffen, Planning. The binding site plan is an administrative subdivision process, and that has been approved. The current configuration was approved following the 2005 development agreement approval.
And then, one other question about the setbacks. Reducing for 200 to 100 feet for residential, is that something that DOE isn't supportive, or is that just strictly a city master plan?
It requires a Department of Ecology approval, and we have met, the port and the Planning Department met with Department of Ecology, and they didn't raise any objections to it. to it. What they have stated, and the next item you have, is also a shoreline master program amendment. They've asked us to package those together to go down simultaneously, so that they... Because they have procedures in sense of public comment and such, they want us to package the two amendments together and go through their process. So that's why we're moving them forward at the same time, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I've got a question. Lots of material to go through, so I may not have found the right tab in the document, but can you describe a little bit about the warehouse building and what its proposed use would be with this project?
I will let the port do that.
Okay.
Because I don't know what the whole broad... Totally, so, yeah.
Commissioner Sosin?
Thank you. Can you refresh my memory about the two... Initially, the 200-foot setback from the water's edge and what requirements that satisfied?
Well, the... Going back to the 2003 amendment, this area at that time didn't allow any residential. So residential was added to the waterfront commercial... Well, it was changed to waterfront commercial, and residential before that wasn't allowed down in this port area. And the port at that time did not request a change to the shoreline master program to allow residential within the shoreline master program area. It would have... They had other amendments that were required, but between Maritime Trust and the port, it wasn't something they requested at the time. So we didn't receive any negative feedback or anything on it. It just wasn't requested at that time, so.
Follow-up question, if I may. Do we have other areas within our shoreline master program in the city of Everett that maintain a 200-foot setback for residential? Clearly, there are commercial uses within that zone as the... On the previous plan, but also this one.
Well, I guess the... Maybe I'll restate your question a little bit, because basically, this doesn't allow it in the shoreline master program area, which is 200 feet. So there are other shoreline master program areas that do not allow residential in them. So this is not unique in this area, but they tend to be like the deepwater port area or other areas where there is industrial-type uses. So there are other areas... I don't have the shoreline master program right in front of me, but that do not allow residential because within that 200 feet, so.
Some do.
Pardon me?
And some do.
And some do, yeah. So like the riverfront area, that is a waterfront commercial area, where, you know, with Polygon's project there, there's residential within the 200 feet there. In fact, there we have residential with... They're asking for 100 feet there. We have residential within 50 feet, and the only reason why it's 50 feet is that there's a buffer for enhancement along the river, and the trail system is in there. So otherwise, the residential... There isn't a limit there for the residential from a zoning standpoint. It could be right up to the water's edge, but there's other environmental conditions that don't allow it there, so.
Thank you, that helps.
Yes.
You had mentioned a fish... Is it a Fisherman's Wharf, or was it an idea that hadn't been completely integrated into the concept quite yet, that...
In the current agreement, the... In the current agreement that we have with the port, the Maritime Trust agreement, they didn't set aside a place for the fishing fleet.
The fishing fleet.
Within this area. The port now, as the developer, is proposing an area where the fishing fleet can locate, have its nets and that type of thing, and is integrated as part of the development, where before Maritime Trust didn't go there, so.
Is that zoned industrial, or...
No, it's a waterfront commercial zone, so it...
The fishing fleet operations, would that be sort of commercial fishing?
Well, it'd be allowed as a part of the marina use. We're not talking about processing plants or things. We're not, and I don't know what the port thinking, but, you know, I mean, it would be, you know, you know, the zoning would not allow a fish processing plant. It would, you know, allows, you know, the fishing fleet, the people loading and unloading, you know, nets and gear and that type of thing. Stuff that's normally around the marina, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? So since this is a workshop, we'd like to give the applicant, in this case, the Port of Everett, an opportunity to make some comments.
I'm Terri Batshuello with the Port of Everett, and that's my team in the front there. So we're happy to answer any questions. One of the questions that you were asking about is the electronic signboard demonstration. One of the things we thought would be really a good way to show what the impact would be of that signboard was to have the company that is manufacturing the signboard that we selected to demonstrate it for a few days. I believe there's three days. I know it's November 20th for sure, from noon until 8:00 PM. And what we hope it'll demonstrate is how the signboard will be shielded, the low level of illumination, and then how we intend to manage messages, so there aren't blinking or flashing messages. We think this is a pretty important sign for us, because we have a lot of events happening down on the waterfront, and we want to make sure the community is aware of those without putting a whole lot of signs up everywhere. Everybody wants to have their own special sign, and so by doing this, we're able to have a message board that really reflects the entire neighborhood and keeps everybody up to date, and really serves as a community service. We wouldn't have any more than just the one, two-sided board, and the destination of the sign, we actually already have this large ship feature on the gateway, and there's an inset in that ship feature that was designed for this electronic board to go inside of if it's approved. So you can see where it will go, and then you can also see the demonstration. The second question, it was asked about the street vacation. I just wanted to reiterate that the actual ordinance was passed, and the port paid somewhere upwards of $1.3 million for that right-of-way, which was vacated, and we would be asking the city council through this process to modify the vacation ordinance to allow us to do something different there. But it did get finished. The last question I had was describing the warehouse building. Well, we think it's really important that the warehouse building take an important position in the project, to reflect the nature of the community and the history of the area. The warehouse building actually was sort of a sampler building of all the woodworking products that the warehouse mills had, and people would come up and look at the house, and they would choose things off the building to order their wood supplies. So we think it's a really good representative historical building that reflects the history of the mill industry here. And it's really one of the last remaining, you know, historical buildings on the site, because so many buildings were taken down for cleanup. So we'd like it to have a prominent position. And what we also would like to do is to make sure that the two-acre park at the end of the pier, because it is so close to the residential area, I really think it's important that it have a public civic use out there that causes people to go out there and makes it feel like a park, and not just the front door to the condos. The building itself will serve two purposes. The inside of the building has got about five different rooms. It's got like a fireside room, and a banquet room, and a grand hall, and some office areas, and then it's got a loft area upstairs that could be for receptions. And we have a number of important stakeholders, in addition to the Everett Yacht Club, which is planning its own separate building. We have the Sea Scouts and the Power Squadron, and the Sail Club, and, you know, a variety of different marine-related groups. And so our proposal is that it would serve as a marina clubhouse for year-round use of the community for these types of activities inside. On the backside of the warehouse or facing the park, we plan to build a stage that would allow performances, live performances, to fill the boxcar park with entertainment and activities. So that's kind of what we have planned for the warehouse building. I think that was all the questions that I was supposed to respond to.
There's a couple of things.
Do you want to add that, Denny? You guys introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Denny Derrickson. I'm a planning consultant to the Port of Everett on this project, on and off for about the last 13 and a half years, I guess. Hopefully, this is the finish line for real. So I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the things that have occurred in the past and what's happening now. The question on the view corridor and the vacation of 13th Street, that the 13th Street vacation and the view corridor were part of the original 2003 proposal, but as the project evolved, the original project, which evolved into Port Gardner Wharf, and was reapproved by the planning commission and council in 2005, the design of the buildings was kind of concentrated more into the center of the project, and additional building height was approved. And part of that height was the construction of a 15 to 20-foot-high parking deck podium under all of the central buildings along that corridor. And so the actual corridor width was preserved for a view corridor, but the podium raised up that whole area. And then on top of that, there was fairly, pretty elaborate landscaping, very large shrubs, even small trees. And so in the view analysis that was done for the project, that landscaping, not even really at full mature size, was included in the design. Well, as you can see, when you look at the view analysis, there's hardly any view corridor left, and perhaps for a few people in just the right spot up on the bluff, maybe there's a little bit of it there. But the real purpose of the view corridor originally was for the people inside the project on the ground, inside enjoying the project, or walking down the street, or even driving down the street, although in a car, it'd be a pretty quick look, to basically see the water through the site. Well, once the project was reapproved and with the parking deck and the additional height of buildings and landscaping, that effect or the ability to see through the site from ground level was gone. And so there's really... There hardly was a view corridor remaining. And so the point, I think, when we re-reviewed the design of the project for a lot of good planning, site planning reasons, it just didn't make sense to kind of leave that whole area without any buildings in it. So the buildings were kind of pushed into the center a little bit more, and the density rearranged, and it freed up more of the edges of the site for the critical thing that we kind of heard a little bit about during the original approval and during the port's new process here in the last several years. The port and the public really agreed we need more public open space on the water's edge, and so two and a half acres of additional public open space near the water's edge was added into the design. Well, to get that open space on the edge, some buildings had to be moved back from the shoreline edge, and also the amount of surface parking was reduced, and parking structures replaced that in key places in the center of the site. So that's the trade-off. You can have sort of a non-functional view corridor down the center of the site, or you can have more public open space on the edges, because we still needed to get the same amount of density on the site to pay for all the amenities. So I think that's the basic rationale for why that change was made. And then going along with that, that also prompted the port, working with its design team, to propose that a limited amount of residential development be allowed within the 200-foot shoreline zone. And even though we're talking about officially in the approval that's being requested for a 100-foot setback, in reality, if you look at the handout, that site plan that shows the actual building locations within the 200-foot zone, that would include some residential use, I think the closest building is only about 40 or 45 feet projection into the 200-foot zone. So in reality, based on the site plan that's being asked for approval, the closest that any of these buildings would be from the water's edge would be more than 150 feet. And more importantly than that, these buildings, all that... There's about 44,000 square feet of actual residential use that would be within the 200-foot shoreline zone, but only about 6,500 square feet of that would be on the ground floor of these buildings. Almost all of the actual residential use, limited as it is, would be on the upper floors of the building. That's important to remember, because the vast majority of water-oriented commercial uses that are proposed within the project before in the original design and continue to be in the new design, would be primarily users of ground-floor space. There's only a few limited exceptions to that general principle about water-oriented commercial or other public-oriented, water-oriented uses that would be exceptions to the ground-floor rule, and that's hotels, and there's only a couple of those, and they've got kind of their own reserved locations, and a little bit of high-end select-type restaurant use. Again, they're in a special locational place that isn't jeopardized or wouldn't be pushed out of the way by that limited amount of residential use. So what we're really talking about is sort of having our cake and eat it too, where we free up more of the internal part of the site for more job-creating uses, get a little bit more residential near the edges of the site, which frankly gets higher rents and is more appealing to the public or to the residential people that would be renting or buying these properties. And it creates more immediate, close-by upstairs customers year-round to support a lot of these waterfront commercial uses, because we all know that during the slow season, like we're getting now, it would be hard for some of these businesses to stay open over the long term if they didn't have a decent customer base on the site. And I think it's the most logical mixed-use way to go. So we're talking about primarily residential vertical mixed-use within the shoreline zone, primarily on upper floors, which really wouldn't be used by water-oriented commercial. What you'd get instead, if those residential uses weren't there, would probably be things like offices and maybe high-tech businesses or something like that, but that's not an ideal use of waterfront commercial area either. I mean, they've been doing this approach in Europe, vertical commercial ground floor and upstairs residential mixed-use for 500 or more years in pedestrian-oriented places in Europe that some of you hopefully have had the chance to go see, and we all pay good money to go see and visit. So it's a success formula that's worked in the past, and should, if it's done right, be really successful on this site. So those are really primarily the main reasons that the changes were made, because again, we need strong revenue producing uses of these mixed-use buildings near the water's edge, because the extra amenities that the port's trying to put in on the water's edge cost a lot of money. And so this is a good way to pay for it, and just ensure better successfully, more successfully ensure the financial viability of this expensive-to-build project. So that's kind of a long-winded answer on that, but I think it's important that you understand this important change, because it is important to the success and feasibility of this project, to make these... It's a fairly subtle change, but it's an important change, and it does require a change in the shoreline master program, but we think it will not have... Will not jeopardize waterfront-oriented commercial uses, will actually help add more public use of open space and public access on the water's edge as part of the benefit, so. Any questions on that? Okay. Oh, there's a question.
Denny, you mentioned that the design change in regard to the 13th view corridor, did you say that happened somewhere in between when the original concept plan was approved and this proposal, or was it this proposal that's designed away that?
Well, it certainly happened in three steps. The original open, you know, view corridor and 13th Street was part of the original 2003 site plan approval by the planning commission and council. But then in 2005, the developer at that time, Maritime Trust Company, basically wanted, needed, I think, after they did more feasibility work, to get more heights and a little more density concentrated into the site. And the only way they could really do that was to add some additional height to the buildings, and a very elaborate view analysis process was developed, because there were legitimate concerns from the folks living on the bluff about view impacts. And so that exercise proceeded, and once the right balance of more heights but no impact on the neighbors or minimal impact on the neighbors above was struck, then the site plan was reapproved. Well, part of that site plan, though, was to add more parking under structure. That's what kind of raised up these buildings, to get more heights for the buildings, but also more parking that they needed in their... Underneath the buildings or between the buildings. And so the podium was added, which basically created about a two-story-high height increase of structure. of structure right down that center 13th Street Corridor, that parking podium that went between the different buildings. And so the View Corridor for people on the site or on the West Marine View Drive walking by the site basically went away.
So I guess the question that I have is whether or not the issue of the View Corridor is really up for consideration now. I mean, are we comparing the 2003 approval and this proposal, or the two, what they had in 2005, since that was the last adopted plan? And if that's the case, and the View Corridor went away in 2005 by that design concept, it seems to me the question of the View Corridor is, is off the table now.
Alan Giffen, planning. You're comparing the proposal to the 2005 Development Agreement, which is currently effective.
Right.
And so the proposed amendments to the Development Agreement would include a site plan that would take what is shown on the site plan for the 2005 Development Agreement as a View Corridor and allow for buildings to be located within that area. But Dennis is correct, the 2005 site plan did allow for parking in, within structure and below structure in the, within the View Corridor, so I think it was up to like 15 feet above the surface elevation, so you wouldn't, as a pedestrian standing on the site, be able to see down that corridor with a view of water. For some of the housing on the bluff above, there would be a bit of open, open remaining View Corridor from housing up above, but in the right location, they, they still have a View Corridor. But there were some things that were allowed to encroach into that, even projections from the buildings abutting that View Corridor, such as decks and, and certain architectural elements from buildings.
So I guess it's partially there still?
It is, but...
Well, they go away completely.
Well, I think the best way to think about it is, I mean, the, the whole podium was going up, the, I mean, the, the port and the...
Right.
The whole road was increased in height out there. And so the, and there was a, the street would have continued on, and there was, you know, there was streets and parking up there, so, but it was on a higher level, and then there was parking under.
Right.
And the really, I think of it in downtown, where you have streets and you have trees on them, you still have something through versus a building there. So, I mean, there is a difference in it. Is it a View Corridor for the houses up on, on the hill? Probably not true in the sense of what Denny said, but within the development, the units, because it was small, you know, blocks, the buildings themselves within the development would have views. So it was not just the external stuff, it was internal also. So you go up to 65 feet within the development, and you have a street going down there, so the units that were near the, closer to West Marine View Drive would have a View Corridor within the development looking towards the water. So it's, it's a different concept within the development. So it's not just the, from a, from GGLO and Maritime Trust concept of the development, this is a different concept. And so views in the sense of the development and what Maritime Trust was thinking had to do internally as well as external.
And I, I understand that, but my, my concern is that there was a, a public benefit to having the right-of-way there, and that was a View Corridor that was available for both folks on walking along the road, cars driving by, or folks up in the hillside, as Denny has described. And so part of it went away through the 2005 exercise, and it seems now the proposal is to take away the rest of it. Now, I understand there'll be views within the project, but that's under the control of the developer. And that's, in my view, that's different than a public benefit that will be taken away now by this process. And I, so I think it needs to be kind of looked at in that regard, and I don't know if it's good or bad, but it just seems to me there needs to be a good understanding of what the implications would be of this proposal.
Right.
Lisa wants to say something about public outreach.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa LaFevere, Port Staff. I just wanted to weigh in a little bit about the View Corridor as it relates to 13th Street. We have done one-on-one outreach, recognizing the 2005 changes were significant, and the neighbors rightly so had a lot of concerns about the changes in heights in 2005. So we wanted to make sure that we had, I guess, some lessons learned and make sure we loop back with those directly affected by this project, and we have done that. We've met with several of the owners, particularly the one most affected by the 13th Street View Corridor, and explained the reasoning behind the shift in the development strategy from Maritime Trust to Waterfront Place Central, and also talked about, I guess, the whole picture as opposed to, you know, looking down the silo of 13th Street and kind of look, opening up the 180-degree view and, and the different View Corridors that do open up to the left and the right of the development from the bluff. And I think Dave spoke to the internal View Corridors that are opened up with this project as well. So I just wanted to let the Commissioners know that that outreach has been done with respect to the heights. Thanks.
I was just going to add on the, on the public benefit concern. You know, the public had a right-of-way there, public right-of-way. We did pay full market price for that. We also are replacing that right-of-way with a number of port-developed right-of-ways throughout the project, so that benefit is being replaced. And then the benefit of the View Corridor, there are a number of other View Corridors opened up that are shown in the view study, but also we're replacing it with a large, a large park at the end of the pier, a fairly large park at the Pacific Rim Plaza in Fisherman's Harbor, and all, about 15 other public open spaces throughout the project. So we feel like we've met the, you know, public benefit that would, would it be taken away under the ordinance.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any other questions?
I, you know, it made perfect sense to me that, I understood, is it Dennis, the, the redistribution and the rema, you know, changing the massing and the breaking up of the massing. I'm imagining this podium, you know, coming up and then having this sort of mound that you can't really see through, but then breaking it into smaller masses, and it, I, I'm under the impression that there was some pretty extensive 3D analysis done, and that was part of that public outreach process. So the neighborhoods actually had a chance to see what, what the impacts were going to be and compare and contrast the old concept with the new concept. And I'm, I'm under the impression that there wasn't a whole lot of issues with, with the new concept in, in terms of, you know, I'm just, just because it's a dematerializing of that, that mound or that mass, is kind of a breaking up of the mass, you know, and being able to have, you know, a little, catch little glimpses, a little views through, down, down little corridors and, and getting glimpses of the water through the buildings and, and that type of thing. So I, I think that was kind of a key part of that process, was it not?
Yes, it was. And we did show the same View Corridor analysis. In fact, those neighbors saw it first before anyone saw it, that you have in your packet. And we did extensive research, and we really have tried to balance and make this project better than Port Gardner Wharf by creating more public access, access and open space and creating a, a project that really reflects Everett more than Port Gardner Wharf did. And we're, we're pretty excited about the project, and we hope that you guys are too.
Terry, the outreach that was spoken about was, what would the public say?
We met one-on-one with the owners of houses directly above the bluff, and we met one-on-one with the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee. I think we met with everyone, we, we asked everyone that was on the Ad-Hoc Committee to meet with us, and we met one-on-one with those people, and those meetings went on for several months. And then we held a SEPA meeting, and we've had a number of open meetings and how, open houses and meetings with the Marina, and we've had very, very positive comments. In fact, we've had probably 10 times as many people asking to be on the list to buy or rent housing in the project than we've had any kind of comment whatsoever. So it's been very, very positive.
Those most directly affected up on Grand Avenue, was, were they, did they like the new concept?
Yeah, they did. And the one who was most directly in line with it, to vaguely quote him, he said, "If anybody has a right to be concerned about it, it would be me, and I'm okay with it." So we felt that was a pretty positive statement.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Sosa?
When I look at the, the map of the previous development plan and the current one that we're being asked to allow to take place, the, this is how I see it visually, and there may have been a direct desire to create this, but with the exclusion of the 13th Street Corridor, a lot of property was opened up to maximize heights at 65 feet and 55 feet, because there's no roadway there, and then the buildings could be clustered, the density clustered into the zone in this building envelope that allows for the highest heights. That can't be a coincidence. So I, I think there's some economics driving this, whether it is, whether it is a deletion of, or I should say an elimination of public benefit or not, the, the way the buildings are clustered in the new plan clearly increase the square footages that can be built at 65 feet, 55 feet, and 45 feet, because we're, there, there is no roadway there now. So that seems to me to be really the elephant in the room as to why the, the circulation system has changed. I'm not saying necessarily that that's bad. It may give us a denser, higher-quality development, but it looks like this was done intentionally so that those buildings, mixed-use and residential, but also job-creating, could be maximized, having nothing to do with views, or views on the street, or views from the bluff. I think it is purely economics.
Well, I, I think that it's true that we're creating a benefit for the community by the way we're approaching the project, opening up more open space, and it's also true that we're trying to, to be more efficient with the land by clustering the buildings closer into the middle. It's also true that the maximum density of the project, the, the bookends that we have for the project have not changed, and so we may be rearranging the furniture, but it's the same amount of development, trying to make better use of the property than, than the Wharf project did. So as a result, we have much larger open spaces and much larger public spaces for it, but it is a more efficient use of the property. But it does not increase the density of the project overall. The table's the same. Do you want to add to that?
Denny Derrickson again. An answer to your question, and I'm not sure we've calculated the exact difference in the footprint, square footage of the tallest buildings on the site, new versus old, but as your eyeball, if you make the transfer over to those darker colors in the center, the difference is, is small, you know, not, not very significant. And as, as Terry said, that the total square footage of the site for these uses has not changed. Most importantly, though, if you look at the view analysis between the 2005 approved plan and the new plan, there's almost no difference. In fact, the very slight change that may be negative in terms of the new project is the very little bit of the View Corridor that is still visible up on the bluff in the, from the old plan, isn't there in the new plan, but on the very, on the edges of the site, looking at, especially on the Marina side to the southwest, there's actually a little more view from the new plan than, than the old plan. So it's a trade-off, and so it's in the eye of the beholder, but the point really is that we've done a better job of using the site efficiently, providing more shoreline-edge public open space and benefit, and not really creating any new view impacts overall. So I think that's hopefully the takeaway message, that that's why we think it's a better plan, and it works better for marketability and other reasons, so.
I was trying to remember the day where we came up with this height diagram, and we basically took the Port Gardner Wharf plan, put that kind of clear paper over it, drew around the things. So it wasn't a lot of science that came up with this, but I will point out too that there are cross-connecting roads that are just half-shaded that are, that show up like for flexibility about where the exact road ends up, so that you can't really see the, the colors of the crossroad. I guess they really are there, but it does, there are cross-through roads. What's, what's really changed is that middle, middle piece, so. And we did go farther in from the sides, but we were trying to approximate as closely as possible the other plans' heights, and then pull things to the middle and keep it at the same density. Lisa is a real, been a real consistent person to talk about not increasing heights, not increasing densities, to honor the commitment we made to the public in a, you know, the second time around on Waterfront Place. So we've been trying not to open that whole issue up again and stay as consistent as we can. But I agree, it does make more efficient use of the property and clusters it more towards the center.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. So regarding next steps for the Commission, it sounds as though there will be a demonstration of the proposed sign on November 20th, I believe I heard, from noon to eight, although I don't know if there's a specific time within that range that we're asked to appear. Might talk a little bit more about the specifics of the sign message board demonstration.
Hi, Lisa LaFevere, Port Staff. We are still working on getting the exact details. We'll make sure that Alan and Dave get the information. We were thinking probably in the, the four to six timeframe, sometime in the evening when you can see the, the potential impacts of the, the lit sign, if any. We are working very diligently to ensure that, that it's a very low-lumin sign, so I think the demonstration will be very helpful. We originally have it scheduled from 12 to 6:00. I'm working very hard to get that extended to 8:00, and I think we'll be able to get there. So we'll have more details with that in the coming days.
Okay. Although I might note with our time change, it's pretty dark by 6:00, so you might not need to extend it to 8:00.
That's kind of what I was thinking originally, was that, you know, it's dark at 4:30 now, so.
Yeah, well, actually, I sent them an email, asked them to extend it mostly for people who live there and work, and if they work in Seattle or someplace else, they have an opportunity to get home to, to see it. So that, that's the only logic there, is that not everybody works in Everett, so, you know, people who, who have a house up on the bluff or, or, or a business that they, they would have an opportunity, that's, that, that was the thinking, so.
And I think they'll be okay with that, I just need to get confirmation, so I think it's a good thing, especially with traffic these days, so.
But in a sense that we, I just encourage you on your own to go view it if you like to. We'll get the information out to the public and working with the port, but we weren't looking at it as a formal meeting. If we got you, a majority of there, we'd have to have as a meeting, and we'd have to televise it for the TV, based on... and we'd have to televise it for the TV based on, based on, oh, maybe we should do that. But anyway, but we could have you all standing down or next to it and on TV, so, anyway. But anyway, so, but, yeah, so we would just encourage you to observe it on your own, so.
Okay.
Dave, will that be set up to be similar to the actual installation as far as size, location, height, all that?
I have the port address up, so.
Yes, that's the intention. I don't know if you guys have been down to the development, but there's a, a big entry feature at the entrance of Port Gardner Way, thirteen, soon-to-be Thirteenth Street. And there's a, not the nicest graphic in the middle of it as a placeholder. That's where the, the digital display is expected to go. And so we'll do our best. You know, obviously, it's a, it's a, the sign is integrated into the feature. So it's going to be interesting if we're going to be, actually be able to attach it to that for the demo. So we'll have to do it in a way that doesn't impact traffic. But it is intended to be the size of that area.
Okay, thank you very much. And so then after the, after we have a chance to observe the sign, then at our December 2nd meeting, we would be holding a public hearing on this item in terms of the next steps. And then on page four of the staff report are the eight criteria that we will be deliberating on. So given that, are there any other questions regarding this topic for tonight? Yes, Commissioner Sosa?
Thank you. I only had one. And that, that is regarding the, the first item on our amended request list, which is to allow residential units in a portion of the shoreline jurisdictions per the attached diagram with a reduced setback of one-hundred feet. If what we're looking at as the conceptual site plan or the exhibit one shows no buildings any closer to the water's edge than one-hundred-and-twenty feet, I'm curious to know why we would consider a one-hundred-foot setback.
Well, one, I guess, a quick answer from a staff standpoint is that the buildings you see there aren't necessarily the buildings that will be built. The planned development overlay process allows for, with a minor amendment, meaning administrative amendment, and I can actually, I'll provide that to you so you guys have that. It's a planning director's interpretation that we worked out with the attorneys related to the riverfront. But if, if you had one forty-thousand-square-foot building, you could make that into two twenty-thousand-square-foot buildings, and that the footprint that's there doesn't have to be the same footprint. So from our review criteria, we weren't taking, this is a site plan, but it's a conceptual site plan. And so the port may be willing to go to some other standard. But for us, we, you know, there would be a flexibility within the code to allow them to go within a hundred feet, so. And we, and they could combine a couple buildings into one building or split a building into two buildings. That's what's allowed under the code, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.